I will call a meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Anyone throwing up a flag or anything?
Yep, we're, there we are.
Perfect, alright. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone, everyone can, if you're not talking, if you could please mute yourselves, there's quite a bit of background noise.
Just a quick question for Gene, you have your hand raised, are you wanting to speak at some point this evening?
At the public comment.
Okay.
Well, the reason I did it early because last time I raised my hand virtually and, and I had a, I had to actually wave on the screen, but we'll get by.
The mayor's not really good at doing this whole hand wave.
We forgive you.
I appreciate that.
Why you forgive me?
Alright, any changes to the agenda?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of additional items under administration that weren't included on the agenda, and I'll bring those up at the time.
Okay, any motions to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Second.
Motion by, was that Dawn?
Amanda.
Motion by Amanda, second by Dawn.
Second by Kate, that was Kate. We'll say our names after we motion.
That would be fantastic, thanks. Alright, well Dawn, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I as well, agenda is adopted. Alright, we have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements tonight, so we'll jump into public comment. And Gene, you lined up well ahead of time to speak, so the floor is yours.
Okay, first I want to say I think you're all doing a good job, everybody there, you know, I know it's not an easy job and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but it may sound like I'm picking on the enforcement, but it's not their fault, but if they don't know what's going on, that doesn't help either. I just want to share what I've seen in the last two weeks, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay, I've seen a golf cart in the park, I know they're not allowed, I don't have a golf cart, I even know that. I've seen three golf carts, different golf carts, missing the slow-moving vehicle sign. One of those golf carts has a, it's a road safety triangle, roadside safety triangle, that's not a slow-moving vehicle sign. These are progressively getting worse. I've seen a nine-year-old, nine-year-old, about nine-year-old girl driving the golf cart. She doesn't know any better, but her grandmother's sitting next to her. The next day I see an 11-year-old boy driving the same golf cart with his grandfather next to him. And twice it happened where I seen a golf cart driving on public or private property without the owner's permission, and I'm the owner and I didn't give permission. I just thought I'd make this aware to you. I know when they apply for a permit, they got to sign that they're going to obey all the laws and the ordinances, and they're supposed to have a copy of the ordinances. I think this is part of that culture, do whatever I want. And I realize it's very difficult to enforce because the police cannot be everywhere. I, I have no idea what the answer is. Thank you, thanks for letting me talk, thanks for listening.
Thanks, Gene.
You bet.
Brady, you're, you're on, I see. You, you have any thoughts on, there you are, you have any thoughts on Gene's comments?
Uh, it's kind of the age-old testament, and you guys probably understand this, there's never a police officer around when you want one. And I understand Gene's frustration, but these things are happening when we're not around. I think you all know that we've done our due diligence in enforcing the ATV and golf cart ordinances, but if we simply don't see it, we can't do anything about it, and I don't know what the answer is. The violations of the triangle and the slow-moving, they might not very well know. The intention is there probably to follow that ordinance, but they fall short, that part of the ordinance. And Gene is welcome to call us when he sees the violations and we can try to enforce them. Other than that, I don't know what to say to it. I, I think the statistics show that we've had 198 permits purchased to date, which is extraordinary. Our, our observations are that people are following the ordinances. Very, we're seeing a high compliance rate by the fact that our enforcement has fallen, that we just haven't seen the violations. So overall, I think we're in a great spot, but are we going to be perfect? Nope, never will be, we can't be. It's human nature, we cannot, we don't want a society where there's a cop on every corner watching what everybody does. That would be, in my opinion, a horrible society, and when you have a society like we do, you're going to see violations, just like when you're driving down the freeway and somebody speeds by 10, 15 miles an hour. They're just, it happens, I, we do our best, is all I can say.
So, is the recommendation for when you see something, call the, call the police and let, let you folks know, is that just the best course, or?
Yeah, that's what we try, I mean, we're trying to get a voice out there that if you see a violation, you're welcome to call us on it, if it's something that bothers you and you think police need to take action on it. Otherwise, that's the only way we're going to know, is if you saw and call right away and say, somebody's heading eastbound on Main Street and there's a violation, we'll do our best to get there and observe it.
Well, and you said before in earlier conversations that even if it's, even if as a resident, if we feel it's not, we shouldn't be afraid to call the police, even if it's something that's not, you know, life-threatening or something like that, for quality of life reasons, right?
Yeah, we, that's one of the things we're fighting. We, we don't like those calls when we get there and they go, well, I was thinking about calling and I felt like I should have called, but I just didn't want to bother you guys. And we're constantly saying, we'd rather go to 100 false alarms. And, and we'd rather get called and go to a false alarm and get that one time out of 100 where we catch the bad guy and then not get called at all. If you give us a chance by calling us, there's at least a chance we'll catch that person or that violator. So, we're always encouraging the public to, if you see something, say something. Whether it's 2:00 in the morning and I saw a gentleman walking in somebody's yard, call us, let us get there and check it out. I'll go on my report later, but it's, we don't have a chance if you don't call us. Yes, it's hard to find these violations, but we have zero chance if we don't get the calls.
Thanks, Brady.
May I say something?
Please.
Oh, I, I appreciate you addressing this, I guess the sticky part when it's people in your own neighborhood.
So Brady, how do you handle, one, how do you handle that situation when you have somebody that's in a neighbor or in the neighborhood that makes a complaint and the person gets, you know, they always say, well, would somebody complain on me, who was it? I want to know who it was that made the call.
Well, reporting parties are always welcome to be anonymous. Now, when you are anonymous, we cannot take enforcement action on the anonymous tip alone, but anonymous tip that gets us into the neighborhood and we observe the violation, we can take action on it. So the reporting party can always remain anonymous.
Thanks, Brady, I appreciate it, and thank you, Gene, again for, for speaking up on this.
Well, thank you.
You bet, you bet.
I appreciate the effort. And, and I do realize it is a difficult one, because yeah, you guys can't be everywhere.
Right, right, I appreciate your understanding.
Thank you.
Yep, Commissioner Wolf, I see you're on.
I am on, and that wasn't me talking earlier.
I, I learned that, I realized that, I missed, I didn't mean to call you out.
Hey, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and councilors, everybody, this is Tom Wolf, Scott County Commissioner. Just a couple of things, we talked about I-35 today and the I-35 Solutions Committee, and that's coming along pretty good. I, I know a lot of people may not be going into the cities to work as much now, but it's, it's going to be finished here, I believe, next year. They're coming along on the bridges and the Lake Street deal is going to be really nice, we saw some pictures of that today. We're trying to open up as much more as we can at the county with the CDC guidelines. I talked to you guys about the helipad that's in Cedar Lake Township that they're, it's going to be at our planning commission on Monday night. And so that's, I think that's going to draw a crowd. We're still looking at about a 2.2% levy increase, if the state doesn't cut us, it'll go down into the high ones. And tomorrow at about 10:30, we're going to have the rip and cutting for the 16941 interchange there over between the Scott County, Louisville Township, Chaska, over by the Renaissance area, and that's, so there'll be no stoplights there. That's, if you drive through there, it's going to be really nice, it's going to save a lot of people a lot of time and hassle stopping and starting and that stuff. So, that's all I have today, unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Commissioner Wolf?
And we still got to get together on that CDA stuff, so.
Yeah, I think there's an appointment scheduled, I know I got the invite, so I can't remember the date off the top of my head.
I can't either, but yeah, yeah, can't wait for that, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else on that cares to speak under public comment? Not seen any hands raised or anything like that, so we will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda, and I do have one item on there that I just, I want, I had a question on, but before I do that, does anybody else have any, any questions or anything they care to pull, or? Alright, then I'll, I'll go, I'm just curious, and this is regarding item C, the, the grant agreement on the Webster Wetland Restoration Project. You know, there's a local resident that's contacted me now a couple times, just wanting to know what the timeline is of that. I had emailed Rich previously, he was great, and responded right away with, with some information. I just, I'd love to know, I'd love to know a timeline as to when that work's actually going to get done.
Rich, do you want to handle that response?
Rich is muted.
Rich, you're on mute.
You're on mute. This is like the best version of Rich ever.
You're still muted, Rich, there you go.
Yeah, I'm used to a different program and I didn't know where to look for the button. And it's a good thing I was muted because I was making smart aleck comments. I, I don't know the schedule, like I said in the response, it's going to depend on the conditions, but what we did do, we're scheduling a pre-con with the contractor to talk about his approach and what he's going to be looking for, for conditions, so we can at least better try to predict it. But if the ground's too soft to get equipment on, we can't build it, so they'd be waiting for frost, so it either has to be dry or frozen.
When is that meeting?
It'll be within the next week, we haven't nailed it down, but we, he's opened a meeting and we agreed it would be within the next week, so.
Would you mind shooting me or Tom and just a quick update with how it went?
Sure.
Awesome, I appreciate it. Alright, that's all the questions I had, and I didn't hear anyone else have anything that they wanted to bring up, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda by Kate.
Thank you, Kate. Motion by Kate.
Amanda.
Second by Amanda. Alright, Dawn, you want to vote?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, Amanda? Kate?
Aye.
Alright, consent agenda passes. We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so on to general business.
Mr. Mayor, the only item we have under general business tonight is a discussion related to the CARES Act. At the last city council meeting, council had approved the Business Emergency Assistant Grant Program. As with any type of policy, as you start utilizing it, kicking the tires, sometimes there's a need for a little clarification or tweaking. As Renee has been working with the loan applications, there's a couple of questions that have come up with regards to the application of the policy, and so we have a few questions for the council tonight to get direction. Renee?
Well, the first item that I will review is, the city attorney did recommend that there be a grant agreement that the businesses or daycares enter into with the city, just outlining the terms of the grant, and we are requesting that you approve the form of the grant agreement that was included in the council packet. It was prepared by the city attorney's office, and to expedite the process of awarding the grants, if you would consider authorizing city staff to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city. And then if that, if you do choose to do that, rather than have each of the grants approved by the city council, would you be interested in authorizing payment to the businesses as a prepaid? Or do you want each individual payment approved by the city council? And then finally, I have a question about one of the eligibility requirements. The, there is a requirement that taxes must be paid, their first half taxes. And as I have went through the applications that we have received to date, I did find one circumstance where there was a tenant who met all of the criteria, but the owner of the building didn't pay the first half taxes. So, I kind of need to hear feedback on whether that would make that tenant ineligible or if we should, for tenants, forgive that particular requirement. And to date, we have received 12 applications, nine from businesses and three from daycare providers.
All, are all applicant, applications for the full amount?
All but one, and one was for 4,500, so we're just, yeah, almost, oh, we're 5,000 except for that one, that was 4,500.
Alright, anyone have thoughts they want to weigh in and share, why is I can talk?
I guess for the one that the owner hasn't paid the first half taxes yet, their history, or they pay in the first half every year? Or do they, their history is they do eventually, the history on that property is they do eventually get it paid. I contacted the county taxation department to see if that building owner had worked out any kind of payment plan, and they indicated, oh, it's the, this particular property owner has just paid a little bit late in the past. They're not delinquent from last year, they, you know, they're, they're current up to the first half. So they're incurring late fees by Scott County at this point, but Scott County indicated they don't consider them officially delinquent until after the first of the year.
Okay, I guess in my opinion, I would say that we shouldn't hold the tenant liable for that, that's just my opinion. Especially since there's not, like, further back taxes due. It's my thought.
I think I would agree with Dawn, I think as far as the tenant goes, if the tenant is proving that they're paying the rent, which should be going towards the taxes, we should not be holding back on that tenant and, and be able to provide this grant for that tenant. Not that I really should be saying much, because I probably should still be abstaining from this conversation. I don't know, somebody direct me on that one?
Yeah, probably.
This is a more general policy discussion, maybe it's kind of a gray area, Andrea's not on, I don't, but she is. I would ask Andrea for an opinion on that, whether or not she'll participate or not.
Yes, I think that Kate probably should not participate if she is looking to possibly be an applicant or is an applicant for the grant program.
If she is not going to be an applicant and does not plan, or is not an applicant?
If she's not an applicant and does not plan to apply, then I would say that she could participate.
Well, it's, I, I, Kate, would you mind abstaining?
That's fine, whatever you are comfortable with, Mayor, I'll do.
I just don't want to put you in an awkward spot of getting into the financials of firehouse in a public meeting and what you tend to do, so.
Okay.
Amanda, do you have any thoughts? Otherwise, I'll just start.
Sorry, I agree that I don't think the tenant should be held liable for the, as long as they're paying the rent, that they shouldn't be held liable for the outstanding taxes owed.
I agree wholeheartedly, I, the tenant is the one operating the business, the business is what we have, I mean, we have invested interest in the property taxes as well, of course, but I, especially, you know, when Dawn asked if it was a long, ongoing scenario, doesn't sound like that's the case, so let's not, let's not hold the, hold the tenant responsible for the business owner not being prompt on their taxes. As far as the other items, I, I think it just, it's probably the more efficient process to have staff, you know, fund these without it having to go to the city for approval. I, I can't think off the top of my head a scenario in which we would not, you know, if, if we're looking at an application that is one that we would approve, that meets all the criteria that staff wants to approve, I don't know why we would not want to have that approved, does anyone disagree with that?
I do not disagree, can I go to the property tax one quick?
Yeah.
Curious, I guess, I don't know how to work, like, why would we hold the tenant liable? And is this something where we would have to adjust the agreement for this specific situation? Or is this kind of just a gray area that we're in?
The reason why you would hold, why you approach that is, quite honestly, it's leverage to make sure that the property is paying its way, essentially. So the tenant puts pressure on the landlord to pay the taxes so that they can get the loan, so that they can continue to afford to be a tenant. This is not uncommon language, and in fact, it was borrowed from many of the other programs that we looked at, so this is a standard lever that's applied. For instance, we have several approvals, there's several things that we do as a city that, and policies that we have that you have to make sure that you pay the city, you paying your utility bill and all those types of, and those types of things. So this isn't uncommon, but staff does not have any particular strong recommendation that if the council feels that the tenant should be held liable, that you can remove that from the policy or, in this circumstance, interpret it that if it's the tenant that's applying, that's acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I'm sorry, Renee, what was the third, there was three items you wanted us to address, have we talked?
Just, the first one was to approve the, the form of the grant agreement. And the second question was that to allow staff to execute the grant agreements on behalf of the city or sign them. The third was to authorize staff to remit payment to the applicant as a prepaid, rather than having it be approved by council and the claims for payment. And then the fourth was to direct us on this eligibility requirement.
So the council, we, we feel we've been so directed by the council on that, although I prefer formal motions, so the council could do two motions, the first motion could be to basically approve the staff recommendations, items one through three in the staff report, and then make a formal motion related to that tenants would not, in the case of a tenant applicant, they would not be held responsible for non-payment by landlord of the property taxes for that property.
Before we do motions, I have a couple other questions on this, not necessarily specific to the items that Renee had asked us to address, but my own, maybe my own curiosity, I guess. As far as the revenue loss, I know that was a requirement, how is that, how are we determining the loss of revenue? Are we looking at like year-over-year financials, or how is that being demonstrated?
While we, I don't know that we have a super perfect answer for you. In terms of the daycare providers that I've talked to, I've said if you can even, you know, submit your revenues in January and February versus April and May, or just some comparable reporting period. And it's, you know, I, I think it's a little, it's not always perfectly easy to interpret because, for example, in my small business, I don't make the same revenue every week or every month or every day, it's, it fluctuates. So I think there's going to have to be, you know.
The, the short answer, Mr. Mayor, is it will depend on the nature of the business that we're reviewing. We are dealing with public funds, and so to meet the litmus test, we need to have some documentation, they're certifying that it's accurate, that they have, that they have seen a loss from one period to another from what they otherwise would have had. And so the nature of the business may dictate what that looks like. But it could be as simple as they can print out of their business QuickBooks, this is what, this was our revenues last year for the same period compared to this year, this period.
What I'm hearing is it's, we're not being overly rigid with what someone has to demonstrate, we're just looking to have something that we can have as documented evidence.
No, we're not requiring like documents that are certified by CPA or anything like that, no.
Can I comment briefly?
Please.
So it does, they do have to show that it's related to COVID, and there are certain things that they need to show that they need the monies for specifically, and I think that that, I know that that's identified in the grant program. It can't just be a loss of revenue, it needs to be shown to be directly related to COVID and four specific items that the money will be paid towards.
That was actually going to be my next question, that, you know, are we, are we looking for receipts? And I think some of this was touched on in the packet, we're looking for receipts, lists of expenditures, that, that sort of thing? Is that kind of how we're, how we're determining it was COVID-related?
They would need to identify eligible expenses. We are not at the point for staff where we're going to be requesting specific receipts for those items, because, but they need to demonstrate or document the expense as an eligible, an eligible expense.
Okay.
So, just to review really quickly, the eligible expenses stated in the grant program that you approved at the last meeting, and this is very similar to the 15 other communities that we researched, is just general operating expenses, including rent, mortgage payments, utilities, payments to suppliers, so like cost of goods in your accounting, and then costs associated with reopening or personal protective equipment. I think most, all of the applications that I have received have actually supplied the receipts.
Okay.
Or, in the case of rent, everybody that's paying rent actually submitted a copy of their lease agreement with their tenant.
Okay.
On the criteria, I was wondering if you want to amend that in one aspect with respect to the real estate taxes payment. Do you want to also require that if taxes are not paid, that the tenant has provided evidence of payment of rent?
No, I I don't have that concern.
Because that would be the basis for paying taxes by the property owner.
I would be opposed to that. Amanda, Don, do either of you?
I, yeah, I I agree with you, Joe. I think because what if their business was or their revenue was down because of COVID and that caused them to get behind on rent and that's what then would they be able to use that for rent? And what if that's?
That's the reason the landlord has is delinquent in his payment. They would be unable to demonstrate that.
Well, we have, you know, multiple, you know, rental buildings that aren't entirely full, so. Have a lot of vacancies.
Yeah, I I just I don't want the city getting in the middle any more than necessary of or not township, I'm sorry, landlord resident landlord tenant. You know, dispute. Businesses not make sure the tax revenue comes in. I understand the desire to want to have that, but I just I think that's kind of it's kind of beyond. I don't know. Amanda, what do you think?
I agree with you. I don't have anything additional to add.
Okay. You know, I think since Josh is out, I'll I'll bring this up. I'll maybe bring this up next meeting, but I really do want us to relook at something we had talked about that I brought up last meeting in this conversation and that's it's trying to get or or creating eligibility for township businesses and particularly in Newton Circle. Yeah, one of the items I had mentioned, and I saw this in the minutes as well, was as part of the criteria for those businesses were we would we would be requiring the residents to live within the city or at least a majority of the ownership to live within the city. I think it's a good, it's kind of, I don't know. I don't know if it's a huge discussion, but I do think we should, I'd like to have a full council possible to discuss that. So maybe if maybe I'm just planting a seed for next meeting, so we can maybe give some more thought to that. So. Okay, any any other thoughts before we take a motion and then vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Someone going to talk? Okay. This whole Zoom thing. All right. Anyone want to make a motion or maybe would it be easier to have Tom read what's needed and then someone to say so move?
Yes.
Oh, a motion. So it'd be a council motion to approve actions one through three in the staff report. Would be the first motion.
Yeah.
Amanda?
Amanda gets credit for the for it because she says her name.
Okay, that's fine.
You want a second?
Yep, I'll second Dawn. Do I get credit, though?
Yes, you get credit. All right, in favor, Dawn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Kate, do you want to abstain?
Abstain.
It's abstained. So that passes. Then, Tom, you had another motion you wanted us to pass?
Yes, a motion to clarify for staff that tenants applicants who are tenants are still eligible, even if landlord, the overall property is currently delinquent on taxes. I don't know unless Andrea has a better way to state that.
No, I think that's fine.
Dawn, you want dibs?
So moved, Dawn.
Motion by Dawn.
Second, Amanda.
That's the second by Amanda. I'll vote yes. Dawn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Kate, you abstaining again?
Abstain.
All right, motion passes. Okay. On to on to reports.
I have three items under administration tonight. First item is just a discussion related to council meeting format. Again, with this meeting, there's been no additional changes from the state with regards to guidance and executive orders related to social distancing, spacing, masks, et cetera. The council previously determined that we would continue to work remotely or continue to be separated, not coming to council for meetings and continue to hold remote meetings. I'm just looking to see if there's been any if the council would like to change that direction at this point in time.
I think we stay as is.
I agree.
Okay. The next item is the county board. They're given the construction that they're doing up at the government center. The county boardroom is going to be unusable for most of the upcoming year. And the county board is looking at a scenario which they would go on the road and they would be looking for as possible to rotate hosting their meetings over that year. Normally, I would say, hey, that's not an issue. We would be able to accommodate the one concern I or the issue I think is if we're not holding public meetings here within the building, does the council have concerns about the the board choosing to do so? We're in part, the reason that we're not holding it is because of gathering large crowds, but that's not our decision. It's the board's decision to do that for their meeting. So you can make an argument both ways. I'm just looking for direction from the council so I can get back to county staff on this issue.
Okay. Anyone, anyone have thoughts?
I don't really have any.
Could you come and get on camera?
I just think that maybe can we have clean up after themselves and sanitize area or something if they use it, just so that our staff doesn't have to do that?
We can. The library is also an option, the community meeting room. Of course, specific purposes for government agencies and ourselves and Blood Mobile, they have been opening up that space. That would be the alternative. And actually, the given the size of the room, the social distancing, that might be a preferable option.
Okay, well, if they have other space, then I guess I think that maybe, I don't prefer to have them use the other space, I guess. I don't know.
How many people are we talking for the county board? And how often do they actually have people coming to their meeting, the public coming to their meeting?
I don't know under the current COVID circumstances, but they normally have a small audience at any given meeting. And if they have an item of any level of controversy, they can have people standing in the hallway outside of the boardroom.
And I would say that if the library is a viable option, we try to steer them that direction.
That would be my thought. And this request, I just actually got it today. Just for the social distancing, our council chambers is actually rather small. And if you're going to do true social distancing, the number of people that it can accommodate isn't very many.
Question, will they be considering some sort of form of an agreement then if they do decide to go this route so that they'll indemnification, all that good stuff?
Nope. Under normal scale stuff, probably not.
Okay, I have to agree with Kate. Use the library.
Yeah, yeah, probably. Yeah, I would like to have the county board come to Elka New Market though, is where I'm where I struggle a little bit. I don't know when the last time the there's been a county board meeting in Elka New Market. We've wanted and are making a lot of progress on getting funds. We're getting support from the county for a project with the CDA to get utilities. I think the more county official eyes we can have on our city is helpful. So I hate to just dismiss the idea. I don't know. I it doesn't bother me if they meet in the council chambers or if they meet in the library. But if others feel strongly that they shouldn't be meeting at the city hall, I'm not going to oppose that.
My concern, Mayor, is just simply practical. I think our council chambers may be undersized for what their need may be. And the library, the community room at the library is just is larger. It provides better spacing if they have, especially if they have any sort of a crowd at that particular meeting.
I guess I'm just arguing that's their decision, not ours. If we're being asked to, if we're open and if we'd allow it, that's one thing. If we can certainly point out to them that it's not as it's not as luxurious as maybe Prior Lake. But that could be their decision. I guess that would be my comeback to that.
So what I'm hearing is that the council is generally okay is is okay with it, but we'll simply point out the limitations of the of the various facilities and they can choose.
Yeah, sell that community room at the library the size of our chamber.
Did I did I miss it? I mean, I thought I understood that Dawn and perhaps Kate were opposed to it.
Well, I'm not I'm not 100% opposed to it. I just didn't think of the questions that Kate had. So but again, you know, you said, Joe, that's up to them. I mean, maybe advise them how much people comfortably fit in the chambers doing social distancing. 100% opposed to it.
I'm not opposed to them using our chambers, but I feel if they're going to have a heated discussion or there will be a lot of public in attendance, the library just makes more sense because you're going to be able to spread them out more and there won't be people in our hallway.
Okay.
I would leave it up to them to decide. You could say, you know, we do have these two options for you, but these are, like Tom said, these are limitations with our boardroom versus library or vice versa.
Also, the tech now, I mean, we don't have the great camera system that maybe they are used to at at Scott County. Not that Tom doesn't do an awesome job of running the camera for the video. All right, well, okay, Tom, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
The last item I have is I was contacted by one of the board members with the chamber. And it's was Gordon, and he's in charge of the state of the city presentation. And he was asking our opinion on it. They had originally reserved space for that presentation at the school. That space has been canceled. And at this point, they're just kind of asking, given where we are with COVID and availability of facilities, what is our opinion about doing a state of the city this year? Is it something that we still want to try and do? What might the format be? It was just kind of a, hey, what do you guys thinking? And I informed them that I would ask the council tonight and get some feedback.
In my opinion, that's a it's a chamber driven thing. If they want to have a state of the city, I'd certainly love to participate in it like last year. I I know I saw the same email, Tom, and my thought was, why are you asking us? Why don't you just tell us what you want and we'll 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 oblige. So I I don't have a huge feeling either way. I don't know. What does everyone else think?
I think, Tom, if you want to go back to Gordon and say, obviously, it's a chamber driven event. What are you comfortable doing? We would be okay with like a Zoom or, you know, recording it and then putting it out there, making certain that everyone's sending in questions for Mayor to ask. I guess that's the route I would go. If we are not going to hold our council meetings live, then I don't think that the city state of the city should be held live. That's just my thought.
Amanda, any any additional thoughts? Here none?
I agree with Kate. And since we're not holding our meetings live, it's probably. But again, I'm not totally opposed to it. So you guys do whatever.
We need to remember in past state of the city presentations, we had up to 75 to 100 people.
That is true.
So we need to be realistic and think about this. And if we are not I don't know, if you're not wanting to hold a city council meeting in our chambers, then I think we need to think of other alternatives. Be pre-recording it with pre-existing questions from the community or doing it via Zoom. And people would sign up to be able to watch it. That would be what I would offer back to Gordon or just mix it all together. And maybe it's just an interview process with the president of the chamber and our mayor, and they just do an interview and call it a day.
Amanda, did you have any?
I would agree with what Kate's saying. I just don't think that it's I don't I don't want to say wise, but I don't think it's a great decision if we were to say, yeah, everybody come get together in a giant group of people when we're unwilling, or I guess we're not unwilling, but we're not meeting. And there's, you know, typically less than 10 people at our meetings.
What if you want to, and I could reply to the email as well, you just you let me know if you'd rather I do it, but I would just throw it back to them. Well, we're happy to do whatever they would like us to do. But obviously, we can't provide a venue and can't endorse large outs for anything. So but we'd certainly be willing to do something if they come up or if they however they would like to do it. And I'd be happy to work with them on it. How do you feel about that, Tom?
That sounds like I'm getting pretty consistent direction from the council. I should be able to pop off an email to Gordon tomorrow, you know, to that effect.
Right on. Okay. Oops. I'm sorry, I have a I'm trying to go through like multiple screens to you have it up to Pub, Public Works?
Corey's not in attendance tonight. He did not have anything he specifically wanted me to point out to council. If you have any questions, I can try and answer or I can get the answer from Corey and respond in a regular update.
I'm just curious, that hot asphalt truck that had to be towed. How long did that take to empty out the, I mean, that sounds like something that would ruin my week. And how did they handle that?
They handled it very well. I actually got to see some of the video of of the actual occurrence. Basically, their their big worry was that they had asphalt in there and they needed a way to get it out so they could put it in the hot box. So it just wouldn't turn into a big hard pile. And they were just lucky enough that the tow truck could lift the front of the truck high enough that it would actually dump out. So they basically put a block of wood against the rear against the rear tires so it wouldn't roll, lift the front out, dumped it out, drove the truck away, came by with the front loader and threw it in the hot box so that they could use it then the next day. So at the end of the day, it worked out okay, but the big fear was that they wouldn't have a way to get it effectively out of the out of the the box of the truck and they'd be stuck with a a big mess. But it did work out all right. And the repair wasn't as extensive as originally anticipated. So we got out of the whole deal for about $2,000 in towing and repair. And we managed to salvage the overwhelming majority of the asphalt.
All right. Okay, we can move on then. What's the next report? Is it police, rent, marine, or fire?
Police department would be next.
All right, chief.
Good afternoon, evening, council. I just have a few notes here. Like I said in the public comment, we've had 198 permits have been issued for ATVs and golf carts. The number that I didn't have when I was talking to Gene, but in the month of August, we only had six contacts with ATVs or golf carts. And that four of those were our actual proactive approach, meaning that the officers came across the violations and then took corrective action. So only two were called in by the So only two were called in by the citizens of the community. So for the entire month, I think that's pretty good. And I think that says a lot to the cities and the councils' efforts to kind of stem these issues. And I think it's been a great program. And it's done a good, it's done a good thing for the community. I've had numerous people in that amount of time that have come by and said how much they enjoy it. They appreciate it and they love being able to operate their golf carts and ATVs around the community. So I think it's a great thing. Any questions on that before I move on?
You got a D, someone got a DWI, huh?
Yeah, so that was in the report as well. We haven't had one in years. Just, I gave kudos to Officer Bell, incredible initiative. And it was one of those six where he actually took initiative and stopped an ATV that was driving at ten o'clock at night, no lights on whatsoever on the ATV. And the operator ended up being intoxicated, severely intoxicated. And we're really lucky nothing happened before he was stopped by Officer Bell. So it's an unfortunate thing, but in the end, no one was injured and that's the best outcome possible. Any other questions about the ATVs or what we've been seeing?
I'm just curious, not, is the penalty justice severe?
So about two years ago, they changed the laws to where an ATV-related DWI, ATV, golf cart, or boat does affect your driving record. So yes, it, it does affect your driving record and prohibits you from driving the ATV, but also affects your driver's license. So it is a pretty serious thing. But up until, up until then, it wasn't. And that was a big push by Mad because they found it just crazy that if you got a DWI in a boat or snowmobile or ATV, it didn't affect your driver's license, then what's the problem? You know, there's no, the punishments weren't stiff enough. So that's something that they got a couple of years ago. We can, we're continuing with our current COVID protocols for medicals. We are responding to calls. If we do go inside, we wear masks, just like the mandate says. Anytime we go inside any building, we wear a mask. And we're wearing masks on traffic stops for the most part unless it is prohibiting the officer from seeing, fogging up his or her glasses and keeping them from doing so. Then a big thing, obviously, in this report, the detour ended and the roundabout opened. And I just wanted to bring up a quick point that just, when that opened, as quick as the problems arose, when they shut it down, it went away. We have received zero complaints. Life is getting back to normal along Aaron Drive, for the most part, Kate. I saw a smile when I said it from her. It really changed things. And the intersection is working flawlessly. Just see, it's so cutting times when we sit there in the morning or in the evening, just seeing people being able to move through that intersection without stopping and go from northbound Natchez to eastbound to, without having to stop, it's been awesome. And we've also noticed people are really moving through better and better as time goes on. So the more they drive through it, the more they get used to it, and it's been phenomenal. In talking with Fish Rock, the manager, the next day that it opened, his business went up thirty-five percent. So an incredible amount. So that, that was awesome. Once it opened up, they can get back to some normalcy. With that, I took over as vice president for the Southern Valley Alliance Board of Directors. And I sent you all out a golf outing fundraiser that they're having October seventh in Victoria at Deer Run Golf Course. So if you're interested in donating anything for that cause, for the silent auction, or signing up and you don't have that or can't get it, let me know and I'll get you that link. Otherwise, it's very rewarding to work with that organization. And then I'll be open for questions.
And did you have any questions about accidents on the roundabout? I know I stole your thunder last time.
That was me and it's crap.
All right.
So no crashes yet that I've seen, as of earlier today when I looked at reports.
Fantastic.
Our officers have been trying to do some enforcement in there, slow people down. Have had a number of citations issued, people racing towards the intersection coming westbound, because it's two lanes going into it basically and through it. So that, we've been trying to stem a little bit, but other than that, no crashes. Other than before it opened, when the person drove through the barricades and then crashed around on top of it. But it wasn't open at that time, so. Oh, one thing, we did get hit. I realize there's only seventeen people watching this, but if anybody watches it in the future, please lock your car doors. We're estimating several dozen cars in the Rose neighborhood, Pond's Drive. Got just, you know, thank goodness, no major crimes. This time, we did not have any car thefts, but one of the vehicle owners had keys for that vehicle in the glove box and they were found on the passenger seat from the glove box. So that, the person that went through that car saw the keys, moved them, put them on the seat. Please tell your neighbors, every single one of these several dozen cars, and I know we didn't get reported on all of them, every single one of them was unlocked. We estimate the loss to be several hundred dollars in change and coins and cords and stuff. But every single one of them would have been prevented. Person is on video. We have circulated that video to other departments. No one knows who it is or it doesn't stick out. So, you know, no leads yet, but we just, if we lock our doors, so much of this goes away. So if you don't have any questions, that's my report, Mayor.
I would say I was kind of curious about if a car had been stolen, because it seemed like all of, the individual was like looking for a car to steal rather than all the cars. Because it was just small things being taken.
We will see that. I hate to say this out loud, but several laptops and high-end equipment were packed up. So when that happens, this is usually, and from the video, it looks like an experienced person that knows that computers can be traced, electronics, it's a pawn. This person was strictly looking for cash and taking coin, cash and, and change. And another thing is, these criminals know that in order to take those, you have to carry it. And you look much more suspicious with a backpack or a duffel bag walking around neighborhoods at four o'clock in the morning than you do if you look like you're just a jogger or a walker. So this person's experience probably been caught before. And from the tactics they use, they've done this and they did everything by the book to not get caught. So please lock your doors, tell everybody around you to lock your doors, and a lot of this would be prevented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, Fire District Work Group report.
So Kate and I did meet with Fire District Work Group last week. I did provide a brief update to the council and one of the regular email updates. But we had a discussion related to the budget. Their feedback on the draft budget was that they were okay with it and supported and recommended the adoption of the budget to the city council. The big item on the discussion, of course, was the cost allocation formula that we currently use and how we would handle calls on I-35. After a significant and productive discussion, the group unanimously is recommending back to their respective boards that we amend the formula to redistribute the calls on I-35 amongst the various jurisdictions based on population. The idea, the thought was is that it is unfair for New Market Township to bear the entire burden of that cost. But likewise, all of the jurisdictions benefit from access to I-35. And as they talked about whether or not to pull it out entirely or whether or not to apply it based on some relative benefit, the one constant item that they felt would be equitable would be population. So if you have more people in your jurisdiction, you probably benefit from I-35 relatively, relative to that. And so that was the recommendation. I know that the representative from New Market Township has had a discussion with his board. His board was supportive of that change. I'm waiting to hear back from the representative from Cedar Lake Township. I believe they had their meeting earlier this week. Kate and I talked and we're kind of hoping if the council had any feedback on that tonight, that would be helpful as well.
I have nothing other than what we've discussed previously. Anyone else?
I don't have anything additional.
Does the, is the council generally agree with that approach or have any major concerns about it?
I think it's fair.
I think it's fair too. I don't have any concerns.
So the net effect in the formula is that, as opposed to just pulling them out and it being based on the other factors, it's based on population. So over time, we will have a greater population logically than the township. So that will mean that we would bear more of the burden. But they felt that it should be, that it is a cost and that cost of that should be borne based on that type of equitable item, so. Mine, if I, so the feedback I had from the New Market Township representative was he felt the feedback he got was strong enough that if Cedar Lake is equally strong and the council was supportive, we could move directly towards drafting documents to reflect the change and for the next term of the, of the contract. Does the council have any feelings with regards to how long we should be looking at? I would recommend not more than five years and at least, and the last one was three years.
I don't, I personally don't have any issues with keeping it to three years.
I would, I think three years makes sense if that's what we've done historically.
The first time we went through with the three-year was it was a whole new formula. And the thought was three years was enough time to kick the tires, but not so long that if somebody was severely disadvantaged by the formula in practice, that they, there would be timely revisiting of it. We are making a tweak again to the formula. My recollection and the current township boards may have different opinions was that they were, there was some thought at the time that if we were okay with the formula, we could go longer. But I don't think anybody was comfortable with more than five years in those past discussions.
I think if we can, Tom, we try to push it to five years. That's just my two cents worth.
I'm fine. I mean, Kate's our representative. I mean, I got your back, Kate, if that's what you think we ought to do.
That's kind of what we're looking for, is that, you know, you've got our back and whatever.
Amanda, Don, how do you guys feel about a longer term, consistent with Kate's recommendation?
I mean, I think if we, the only thing that hesitates, that makes me hesitate about going five years is that we're going to be taking on a bigger burden, given our population. And so do we want to keep it to three years in case there's something that's not working out with this agreement?
It's, we can stay at three and see how the next three years goes with the new calculation. That's not a problem. If we want to do that, for sure. I just, I, I think it'll be a tough thing to, once we go to this calculation, I don't believe you can go back. So we'd have to think of a whole new, different calculation, if this one's working. Am I correct, Tom?
I just think, so what we would, this new calculation shifts burden to, shifts some burden to Cedar Lake Township and the city. If we were to say, nah, this isn't working for us, we want to pull it out entirely, it would shift some burden back to the townships because we have a larger population. We have, you know, because we're pulling out the population factor, it would go back to structures and halls. And it has the potential that it would increase their burden. But if you believe that they're going to work cooperatively in the future, like we're working cooperatively with them now, I mean, it's that back and forth. So it's really, how cautious of an approach do you want to take with regards to this?
Well, then let's just keep it at three years and revisit it in three years. And if this new calculation is working within everybody, then in three years, we can extend it to the five years. Is everyone okay with that?
I got your back, Kate, whatever you want.
I would have been okay with the five now, but I see the sense in keeping it three with the new calculation, just to make sure it works.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Next report, engineering. Rich?
I do, I do have some remarks. Thank you, Brady, for the kind comments about the roundabout. We'll take that as a kudos to the design team. Associated with the roundabout, I was in town today and noticed that the decorative lights are largely up. I'd expect those to be turned on soon, so it'll be fun to watch social media to see the commentary from the public. I would think there'll be, you know, as nice as they look, I think it'll be, there'll be some delight from, from that, especially at night. I was in town to do a roll test for 275th, associated with the Boulder Heights development. So a roll test is we take a loaded dump truck and drive down the gravel road before paving it to make sure there are no soft spots or problems. I'm pleased to report the road is as hard as woodpecker lips and we will be paving it on Monday.
That's excellent.
And, and there'll be more work now happening at Boulder Heights next week, I'm told by the developers. That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for Rich? All right, thank you, Rich. All right.
I would like to ask, Mayor, can I interject? I would like to ask, Rich, how hard are woodpecker lips?
Simple answer, go drive down 275th, pound your head on it a few times and then you'll see.
All right, it'll be done.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief of Police, Brady. Community Development.
My report was in your packet. If you have any questions, the only thing that I wanted to pull out and make special note of is that we did meet with a housing developer regarding a tax credit housing project that is being proposed in Alkney Market. And it sounds as if there is a contract, a land contract on the property and they will be submitting the site for a competitive tax credit. So that's exciting.
When you say tax credit, state tax credits, right?
Yes. And.
I, I want to ask for a QuickTrip update.
We are still waiting at this moment for some easements that need to be reached between QuickTrip and RNF Properties. Some easements for that common road that will be constructed through the commercial area that need to be submitted for, before they, we plan to bring it to the council at this point.
What, any guess at timeline for that?
My guess is it's going to be the first meeting in October.
Okay, cool. So I had for questions. Anyone else have any questions?
Renee, on the QuickTrip item, regardless of the timing this fall, this is a 2021 project, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. It's always been planned as a 2021 project, never 2021.
Well, I knew that, but I just hadn't heard anything in a while, so. Um, okay, parks.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Fantastic.
Good. Three things that have nothing to do with parks, 448 Main Street. We started the asbestos abatement here on Monday. And so we're right on time and on target to. We started the asbestos abatement here on Monday and uh, so we're right on time and on target to uh, uh, demolishing the house here later this month. Uh, today we came to an agreement with DSI and uh, we'll be holding that uh, drop off day on October third. May to eleven AM and uh, a little bit different configuration, but uh, it looks like it uh, will work well for us. We've still got to figure out the COVID nineteen uh, kind of uh, parts of that. But uh, we've got a handle on that as well too. So I'll be getting uh, uh, the notice to New Market Township, uh, because they do give us their uh, portion of the grant, recycling grant monies, uh, as long as we inform the residents that they can come and pay the same prices as the uh, city of Elko New Market residents. Uh, farmer's market update, uh, and I want to thank Haley for all of her work on it. Uh, we did close it down here uh, today and uh, about ninety-eight percent of the people want to have a farmer's market. So I think we'd be reasonably sure that we're on the right track. I think the best part of that is I had uh, briefly forty-nine comments uh, from people that either wanted to be a vendor, a volunteer. Uh, so I, I think we'll be able to find uh, some people to help us out on this. Haley and I will put together a, a short report uh, on all of the questions that we asked and have it to you for the uh, uh, first meeting in October and maybe some next steps to uh, take a look at as well there. And if I could be so bold as to move in the CCEC at the same time, uh, the parade of hope uh, is uh, as you saw from last, uh, when I was here last time, uh, everything's set to go. It will start at one o'clock on Saturday, uh, rain or shine, preferably shine. Uh, so uh, we're working on getting out more information on that. The route's been determined and we're set to, we're set to go on that as well too. So with that, I'll take any question, any comments, questions on uh, that or anything I had in the parks update for.
I, I did, uh, before we wrap this up, want to point out that our recreational specialist, Kevin Denigan, did start this week. Um, so he's been in the office a couple of days already. He's already been also been doing some remote work with Mark as well. Um, the farmer's market will be one of Kevin's first projects. He'll be assisting with getting that going here as we move forward. Uh, Mark introduced him to the Parks Commission um, earlier this week and Mark, maybe if you want to talk about your impressions of Kevin so far.
He's on the call.
Oh, he is? I didn't see you earlier, Kevin.
I snuck in.
So that's okay, Kevin. I had nice things to say about you anyway. Would you like when you say some nasty things or shall we stick with uh?
If you want to be honest.
I am honest all the time.
Everybody, Kevin, Kevin, everybody.
Welcome, Kevin.
Hello, everybody. Nice to meet everyone.
I would like to be the first to say that I am extremely impressed by that beard.
Cry later, that's okay.
Uh, but when I saw him earlier today, he had a mask on and wow, I'm jealous.
No, Kevin's doing a terrific job getting started here. He was at the Parks Commission last night, participated. I uh, as a college professor, I gave him some assignments to work on over the weekend, which included uh, trying to draft the minutes. Because as you know, we write our minutes and uh, and uh, read through uh, what I would call a small mountain of uh, uh, background information. Uh, we will talk again four o'clock on Monday uh, to go through some of those questions and uh, I will be handing things off as Kevin feels uh, confident in taking care of them. And uh, uh, I think uh, his programming strengths uh, will be a real plus to the city uh, in the coming uh, years, simply because we'll be moving a little bit that way anyway. Once we get, as we've been spending more of our time trying to get the parks up to snuff, so we can do some of this more, some more programming as well too. So I'm just happy to have him on board. I think he'll do a terrific job for you.
I will say the farmer's market is a big priority for this current council, so no pressure, but excited to have you.
Well, I'm excited to be a part of the team, so thanks, everybody.
Excited to see your magic making the farmer's market happen. If you didn't pick up, that was a priority. All right, um, let's see, we have next, CCEC. Is there more to add on for CCEC?
Uh, only the fact that we'll be doing something for Halloween uh, as well. So uh, I think I mentioned that at the last council meeting that we're looking at a number of things and uh, but our next CCEC meeting is uh, next Tuesday.
All right. Legislative priorities is next.
So the two, our League of Minnesota Cities and Metro meet in the next two weeks. So we haven't met since the last meeting.
I don't think we have anything else. Uh, next is scale. Uh, Executive Committee, actually have notes written down to share this time, so. I, uh, twenty twenty-two, we will be uh, having our first ever um, scale candidate forum. I know I talked a little bit about that um, previously. It's going to be fairly informal, um, really not intended to be a debate style. Um, but more getting to know members of scale, getting to know the different candidates. And giving us an opportunity to um, educate about scale, why scale is so valuable. Um, at least in our opinion. In, in some of the previous legislative priorities that we've had. And really part of the genesis of this is we've had and if you go to the, if you attend the scale meeting tomorrow, you'll, you'll catch some of this. But I mean, it, it feels like we've had the same legislative priorities or similar priorities year in, year out. And there's a number of things that just we don't make a lot of progress on. There's not really a way, we, we try, we like to, when I say we, just talking about scale, we like to think we you know, have good relationships with uh, with representatives up in St. Paul. We like to think we're heard. We like to think uh, scale, I mean, carries some weight, just being such a unique group. Get the cover such a big county. Um, but, and I'm, now I'm speaking for myself. I think we really need to reassess how we actually, you know, go about some of these priorities. So um, you know, it's just kind of too late in the game to do something for this year, but I am excited to see how that goes going forward. Um, as I mentioned a minute ago, we do, we will have uh, our general membership meeting. Um, tomorrow we will be discussing uh, legislative priorities. We did get into, I thought, a really good conversation, our exec meeting last week. But it's going to be a better conversation to have with the entire group. You know, there's a lot of people in a room with a lot of different ideas and we need to kind of drill them down and have a good narrow focus. Um, and we, I mean, our scale exact doesn't include members of like school boards, for example. Um, so there are some parties missing that I, I think would be important to hear from them. So uh, also Greater MSP will be uh, presenting uh, tomorrow. That the focus is really going to be the economic impact of COVID, um, unemployment, underemployment. Uh, and really the trickle down effect to the, throughout the state from an economic standpoint. Uh, Brady, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot a little bit here and maybe you can uh, if you don't mind doing so, talk to the council a little bit. There is a, the chiefs of police are after see, after, well, I mean, after the initial riots in Minneapolis. Uh, felt that we need to be doing more to become more prepared if something happens within the, within the county. Well, with the more, the most recent riots that uh, that urgency came up or increased a bit. Um, so I don't know. I, I know our, the service delivery committee is going to be looking at that. That's going to be gaining momentum and, and really, I think the request is Brady, and this is kind of where you jump in. It's really for additional resources to fund uh, the police departments, so they can have the necessary equipment to deal with riots if something were to break out. Does that sound about right?
Yes, um, I think everybody is well aware of what's going on in our region right now. And it's quite frankly, heading out all across the country. Uh, one of the things that hit home with this particular incident is how close it got um, to our, our footsteps. Um, there was quite a bit of activity on I thirty-five corridor. Wilmington, uh, Burnsville, um, and threats in our county to Amazon, Valley Fair. Um, we're just becoming the Renaissance Festival. Um, people don't realize this, but one of the, we understand COVID stinks, but the state fair could have been a huge hotspot for protesting and it could have been a nightmare uh, this year due to everything that's going on. So one of the huge impacts that really opened my eyes is due to us having such an awesome community, we have a ton of law enforcement that chooses Elko New Market to be their home. Um, I, I easily say twenty to forty law enforcement on a federal, state and county level live and call Elko New Market our home. While one of the things we saw with the George Floyd incident was one of the officers, Derek Chauvin, lived in Oakdale, which is a small community. And the rioters and protesters hit his home or went to Oakdale, which is a small department and they could not handle the workload. There was uh, two to three hundred people protesting his house. It took forty some officers to contain that group and keep them from burning the house down, burning the neighborhood down. And uh, what happened is as soon as Derek Chauvin was arrested, all the other agencies left and Oakdale was sitting there trying to protect this property and trying to protect their uh, neighborhoods. So what we saw here in our county is we do not have the ability to do proper either protest or riot control. Um, a lot of times if something happens independently in Scott County, we can get Minneapolis, we can get St. Paul to help. But guess what? They're not coming in something like this uh, when it happens. And so what we're trying to present to scale and, and is a mobile field force where we would be able to put together a hundred to a hundred and fifty law enforcement professionals based in Scott County that would be able to respond to a um, protest or riot to protect our own communities. Um, whether that be Elko New Market, if God forbid, one of our officers were involved that lives in our community, but doesn't work in our community, but lives in our community, but works in St. Paul, which we have many, works in Minneapolis, which we have many. And um, be able to protect our community. So that's what we're looking to do, much like Kate was talking about with um, and Tom with uh, the fire departments doing a population based. That's what we're looking to do to establish a countywide group where each department, based on their size, would contribute officers and equipment and money to pay for a mobile field force unit that would be on call, have pagers or be able to be texted. And if something did happen at Valley Fair, Amazon in Elko New Market, we'd be able to amass forty, fifty, a hundred officers to come control a protest or God forbid, a riot and uh, and protect our community. So that's the initiative we're going after. I'm working hard as the president of Scott County Chiefs of Police Association with Steve Frazier, the Prior Lake Police Chief, who is a renowned mobile field force expert and instructor and has a lot of experience leading that in um, St. Paul. As a matter of fact, uh, back for the RNC. Um, in two thousand eight, I was part of that, working for the um, RNC, the police departments to work on that, which faced a lot of protests. Um, so we're trying to put that together and that's coming down the pipe, more details. But uh, that's what we're working on with scale with uh, the executive group, which Joe leads and the uh, service delivery group, which Tom leads. I'm open for questions about that. It's kind of multifaceted, but in the end, it's pretty simple. We're just looking to put together a group of law enforcement that can protect our communities and have the proper gear to do so.
Questions for Brady? Brady, I appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure, Joel. Thank you for the time. Also, I appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure. All right. Um, next is service delivery.
Uh, we did not have a meeting this last month, so our next meeting will be in September here and our primary discussion topic will be um, mobile field force um, establishment and funding.
MVTA.
It's at the end of the month. We haven't met since our last meeting.
I thirty-five, Commissioner Wolf, give a brief update. I know we're missing Josh. Um, did, was there anything additional that maybe Josh passed on?
No.
Chamber of Commerce, we don't have a liaison necessarily for the Chamber of Commerce here. I know the golf tournament is tomorrow. Uh, Kate, I always call, you have anything you wanted to add?
Mayor, I will be there. It is uh, on nine eleven tomorrow and it'll be for the, at least for the kickoff. Uh, as long as there isn't any calls, I should say, I'll be there um, with Bryce and uh, we submitted a bunch of photos, so they'll be running kind of like a, you know, law enforcement, uh, public service, ambulance, fire department pictures um, of us in the community during that event as well.
Hey, Joe, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Bryce.
Oh, perfect. Okay, yeah. So I, I, I'm representing the, the chamber tonight.
Oh, you are. I'm sorry. Okay.
No problem at all. Uh, I apologize to Kate at last meeting. I could have chirped up last meeting as well because I was on. But yeah, we are having the golf tournament tomorrow. We have a total of a hundred twenty-four golfers, which is great. Uh, given this year and kind of the challenges of, of COVID. Um, I think in the past years we've had in one thirties, so we have a very great uh, turnout. And like the chief said, we're going to have kind of a tribute to first responders. Uh, just to kind of commemorate um, and, and recognize uh, nine eleven. Um, we've got a great video that's going to be focusing on um, nine eleven and the response in New York City. Along with uh, kind of showcasing our local first responders, police, fire and EMS. Um, and then we're also looking forward kind of to the future and, and seeing uh, if we have the possibility of doing some of our events that we've done in the past, such as the Christmas tree lighting and things of that, that nature. So hopefully uh, as time rolls on, we're able to, to do those events as well.
Appreciate it, Bryce. Thank you. And I'm, I apologize again for, for missing you. I, my mistake, so. All right, um, what's next? Council discussion. They don't have anything for council discussion? Not anyone interested in adjourning?
Motion to adjourn, Amanda.
Second, Kate.
Second by Kate. Uh, we'll vote. Don.
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Amanda.
Aye.
Eight.
Aye.
Union's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.